All right, Bill, I'm recording, so I will just pop in and out.
Okay, great, thanks, Val.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna say I had a message up on the screen to talk to the people that there was a glitch in the technology, of course. So the first time I started the meeting, things went away. So I'm just tell you right now, if you want to speak, raise your hand. I was gonna try to have things open early enough that it'd be easy for everyone to do. But it's a first come, first served basis, but we will keep going until everyone has a chance to speak. If it gets really late, we'll reconvene. But at any rate, at this point, if you would like to speak, start hitting that raise hand icon. If you open your participants panel by clicking go over to the right, there should be at the bottom of that panel, a way to say raise hand. And that's how we'll know who wants to speak. And the order in which people raise their hand is the order in which they will be called. And Charles, that's you helping me let people in?
I'm doing it. I'm doing it.
Howdy, y'all. Hey, that. How's it going, Bill?
All right. Oh, so let's see.
Hello.
So I am confused by one thing. Oh, that was just being disabled. Okay. So I'm going through and muting everyone inadvertently. You are allowed to unmute the person speaking. And as I will go through in just a minute, if you would like to speak, use the raise hand icon where if you open your participants panel by clicking on participants at the bottom of your screen, then over on the right, there should be a way to click something that says raise hand. You'll go into a queue in the order in which you click on that button, and that's the order in which we'll know to call people. You can raise your hand at any time, and I'll go through that again in a minute. Okay, I'll give about two more minutes, and then we'll get started here. Okay, so I'm gonna call this public hearing to order. Welcome to the public hearing on the draft revised Town of Caroline comprehensive plan. This hearing is being run by the Town of Caroline Planning Board. My name is Bill Padalka. I'm chair of that board. In a minute, I'll have the other members of the planning board introduce themselves. Most folks are probably familiar, maybe all too familiar with Zoom by this time. But if not, there's just two things that sort of stuff. At the top, there's a way to choose either what they call gallery view or speaker view. If a lot of people join this meeting, you may find it advantageous to choose speaker view because that means the speaker gets a nice big picture on your screen versus these tiny little things that we're starting to become. But that's totally your preference. And then at the bottom of your screen, there should be the word participants, if you will, your cursor around a bit. And if you click on that, it'll open a panel up on the right hand side, at least for me, it's on the right hand side. And there there will be the raise hand option. And so this public hearing, the way we do that is by clicking on that raise hand button, and that will put you in the speaking queue, and people will be called in the order in which they have raised their hand. And we will continue until everyone has had a chance to speak. All right. So right now, I will go through some more rules in a minute, but right now, let me indeed have the planning board members introduce themselves. And just to, again, so that your box will kind of light up, I'm gonna name, and I would do the order of Charles, Catherine, and then Val, and then Tim, if you're on the call already, you can do that as well. So let's start with Charles.
Hello, everyone. Charles Aldermire. I live here in Brooktondale, and I'm looking forward to hearing what everyone has to say. Thanks for coming.
Hi, Catherine Goldberg Forrest. Nice to see everyone. Welcome.
And hello, I'm okay, good. Well, I've got work. I'm on Midline Road, the very most northern tip of our town. And again, it's wonderful to greet everybody in this. We always learn so much from the from these meetings. Thanks.
And then, Tim, are you on the call now? Okay, he may not be yet. All right. So, you know, the purpose of any public here who weigh in on any important step that the government is taking, in this case, it's the local government. And at this point, of course, we're specifically talking about a comprehensive plan for the Town of Caroline. This is the first time it's been revised. As detailed actually in appendix B of that new document, there's been various opportunities for public input along the way. But, you know, this is an additional opportunity in the later stages. I just want to emphasize that we have that public input. And that sense, we are the messengers. Our job was to sort of distill what we've heard from the community into this comprehensive plan. And now this is your chance to tell us, did we get that right? Did we did get that wrong? It is the community's plan. And tonight is a very important time for the community to give input once again. As I think I mentioned earlier, we will continue tonight until everyone who has a who wants to speak has an opportunity to do so. In the event that it gets really late, then we will mention at that time as to come later. A few ground rules, and then I'll have one quick question for the planning board. First, each speaker has up to five minutes to address the planning board. I will have a handy dandy little timer going. And it's harder in person where I can't like sort of wave at you and say, you've got 30 seconds left. If I have to, I might interject 30 seconds. But it'll go beep, beep, beep when your time's all over. And the one advantage of Zoom is that 10 or 15 seconds after that, I can mute promptly at that five minute mark. Speak only once unless everyone has had a chance to speak. And then if someone wants to speak again, we'll give an opportunity for that if we also have time and energy. Please identify yourself at the beginning of your comments. This will help our note taker. Jessica Townsend is taking minutes from this meeting will summarize each person's remarks. And also, some people are gonna be looking at little teeny tiny images on their screen. And so please say your name at the beginning of your remarks. Comments, perhaps this doesn't need to be said, but comments should be about the comprehensive plan. In particular, what you like, what you don't like, and maybe what's not covered. And, you know, it's not I'm just fishing for praise that I want to know what it is you like. It's an important part of the process because everyone tends to focus on what they don't like. And there might be a section that a lot of people like, but if only 10 people who don't like it speak up, it gives us a very not accurate, you know, a view of what the town senate the good along with the bad. Please also be respectful of the planning board members, all of whom are volunteers serving the town, but also other speakers. I know there are a lot of divergent viewpoints. You know, no, you know, we're all different people. There's gonna be that. But we can at least agree to be respectful of each other and speak in a civil way. And just so you know, the planning board will not be answering questions or respond to comments in this meeting. This is your time to speak up and our time to live. In terms of where things go from here, between the written comments we've been receiving and the oral comments we're getting tonight, the planning board will review and think about all that, make what seem to be any required revisions to the draft comprehensive plan. That will then get passed on to the town board, who will have the opportunity to make their own revisions and present it for yet one more public hearing. This is your not your last chance to weigh in on this, but there'll be one more opportunity down the road with the town board. And before they will finally vote on the plan. Review the plan. It's called the 239 review, and that will be going on concurrently, I think, when the town board has possession of the plan. I have a question for the planning board members. I originally had said, we had set a deadline of midnight tonight for written comments. It's been pointed out to me that perhaps some people want to respond to things they hear tonight. So planning board members, unmute yourselves, and let's just have a quick chat about extending that. And if so, to what date we should extend the deadline for written comments on, again, there will be additional comments later. So thoughts, planning board?
To Monday or so.
I agree, Monday.
Sounds good. I agree.
Okay, all right. So officially, it'll be, and that's a, you know, midnight Monday. This is a 24 hour cycle these days. Like, transactions can come in at any time. So so we'll go to midnight Monday in the event someone wants to either, you know, add or otherwise revise their comments based on what they hear tonight. So great. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I think we are ready to launch into the and I have Mary Kova on top again, please. What I'll be doing is I'll be sending your question, unmute yourself, please, again, reach yourself in case I garble your name or otherwise, but say your name and then start your comments. Okay, so things keep jumping around here. There we go. It's a marriage when you're ready. I have sent an unmute request to Mary Alice.
Am I muted?
You are unmuted.
Oh, thank you. Getting practice, but still not really good at this. So my name is Mary Alice Kobler. And first of all, there aren't words to express how much I appreciate all the hardworking, community minded volunteers and elected officials, too, who have been toiling away for years to create this update of the comprehensive plan for Caroline. Everyone in Caroline, an opportunity to voice opinions on how we should move our town forward into the future. Open meetings have been held. Multiple resident surveys have been sent to every household, and careful analysis of these results has guided the committee's work. My experience is that these meetings have always been an open forum, room for all to voice opinions and have civil discourse. It is amazing and hope inspiring together to plan our town's future. It will take careful guardianship efforts to make sure that the values we have expressed and hold dear are in fact maintained. This is what consensus looks like and civil discourse can achieve. Hats off, and thanks to you neighbors. My family has lived in Caroline for 26 years, and we have put down deep roots. We have a garden that provides much of what we eat and equal quiet, dark sky to appreciate when we are bone tired. Our grandkids visit in the summertime. They come from cities and have the pleasure to see here the moonrise and the constellations that are obscured from life in the bright city life. I wish all children could experience the peace and beauty of our Caroline world. I have witnessed many changes over the years, more houses and much more traffic still Carol. The wilder forest areas are wonderful for outdoor enthusiasts. There are many more bikers, hikers now. And while Shindagan and surrounding lands are precious and need to be maintained as wild areas, so too do we need paths where children can learn to ride their bikes safely, where parents can take kids in strollers. You don't see any strollers in Shindagan, I can tell you that. And we need safe places where less mobile nature. We need trails and paths where we are not constantly afraid of the traffic. I would gladly have ridden my bike to work for the past 25 years, and I was strong enough to do so. But it's not, but it's just too dangerous on our roads. I look forward to a day when we can do that safely. I think this document is well researched and documented. It hits all the important aspects of our lives, land use, water resource, and the creation of renewable energy assets, soil conservation, and the preservation of our precious farmland. I heartily agree on the goals and actions that are so well laid out in this plan and that need to take place. Further, I am very much in favor of carefully drafting zoning rules to protect our rural way of life and the beauty that surrounds us. We are so, so lucky. Thank you for hearing and considering our opinions. We are an amazing community of valued neighbors. Thank you for your hard work.
Right. Thank you, Mary Alice. All right, next up, I have Ellen Harrison.
How are we doing? Am I unmuted? Okay, good. I would second Mary Alice's the planning board. I was on a comprehensive planning committee in the Town of Ithaca, and it's a lot of work, and it's hard to do, and you guys have done a remarkable job. I think the document is excellent. I support the actions that and goals of the plan. I have a number of relatively minor comments which I will submit in writing. And maybe when I quit speaking, you could tell me how to submit them. I now have a date, but a couple of suggestions that are more substantive that I would like to mention. The first one is the changes that we make to our land, whether we're grading it, paving it, draining it, building on it. Those are essentially forever. You cannot go back once you've created such a disturbance. The land does not return to the environmental system that it was. It doesn't and support other ecological values for the large part. We can't make new land. So it is essential, as we plan, that we think not just of the next five years, or 10 years, or 20 years, or 100 years. But we really do need to think about that seventh generation, or really, we need to think about forever. You can't go back. Humans in the developed world are not very good at that long term thinking. Board in the Town of Ithaca, and we were redoing zoning. I was fortunate enough to have gone to Europe, and I was in a town, and there were grape vineyards in the town next to the church, and the vineyards had been there for 2,000 years. They were wise enough to recognize that that had to be maintained. So in that light, I'd like to suggest the addition of a new second paragraph on page 34 is where I see it fitting the best in the second and strategies. What I'd like it to suggest that it might say is, once developed, the land is forever unavailable for agriculture. As climate change impacts agricultural lands in other areas like California, the farmlands in Caroline is going to become increasingly valuable. I would say even essential. And we need to protect it. That's all I'm gonna say about that. If you all have any further questions about what I'm talking about, please contact me. The second point is, there's kind of a conundrum in land use planning that stems from the fact that the same land that is valuable for agriculture and often for ecological values is often the same land that's good for development. It's land that is flat. We can think about portions of the Route 79 corridor, for example. I would suggest that the plan make a mention at least of this conflict. And in particular, on page 40, there is a statement that some locations, this is a quote, within the town with excellent drainage can support a public sewer system. I assume that means like septic system, a large scale septic system. But it would be very good to take a look. My guess is that these are some of the same areas that are probably prime farmlands. So that's a conundrum we have to face. And I would say, at least given what I am seeing, hearing about the values that people are looking for in Caroline and the long term desire for our community, that we should have the preservation of those lands trump take precedence over the fact that we could put a septic system there. I think that's all I want to say to the group. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ellen. And having said we won't answer questions, you asked one question that we will answer. So in terms of submitting written comments, instructors that are on the town website, both on the homepage and then on the planning board page. But basically, if you want to submit electronic comments, they can be emailed for planning, yeah, planningboard@townofcaroline.org, so it's planning underscore board@townofcaroline.org. Or you can mail them, physically mail them to the town clerk's office, and the address escapes me, but it's given on the website as well. Great. Okay, and people disappear from my view when they have spoken and don't have their hand raised anymore. So if, and I think they have, but you know, Mary Alice, now if you could, yeah, mute yourselves, thank you, because you disappear, and I can't figure out how to mute you. So. All right. Next up is
Hi. Um, thank you very much for all your work. It's amazing. And I've got one comment specific to the document, and I gotta apologize for not having finished reading it. And I'll probably have more comments later, or possibly. But on page five of the PDF, which is page IV in Roman numerals in the beginning, there's a novel enabling sustainable agriculture and forest production. And then it continues and closes with sprawl is limited because development is concentrated in housing focused areas and in the hamlets of Brooktondale and Slaterville. And my comment about that is that since I've lived here, Speedville has often felt left out. I had the pleasure of doing door to door petitioning. And I got to know quite a few people there. And through their watershed and their geography, they're more connected to Tioga County than they are, and also their school system than they are to Tompkins County, but they are part of Caroline. And it's a really sweet place. If you haven't been there, they actually have a downtown with a town square. And the folks there have deep roots in in this geography. And I'm sure that this was an unattentional oversight by the committee and make them feel included, which I think is really important. Um, and I'm glad I really appreciate what Ellen said about really long term planning because as humans, we have really short views and some dire consequences because of it. And I would just like to comment that right now, our wetlands and ponds are at the driest we've ever seen. And thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Janice. Let me just reset my timer here. All right. Next up is Lizzie Abbott.
Am I unmuted yet?
You are.
Okay, thank you. My name actually is Elisa Abbott, though I go by Lizzie. I live on Bald Hill up on up above Brooktondale. I have to say that I think the planning board has set up all the aspects of the previous comprehensive plan, incorporating the responses we receive from questionnaires and conducting thorough research into the relevant facts regarding practically everything I can think of, population growth, changes in land use for residential, commercial, agricultural use, et cetera. I'm really impressed with your work. Um, I really have not had a chance to scrutinize the the plan, you know, the full 50. So I just have a couple of general remarks. I think the main thing I take away from the board's assessment is that the town needs to implement stronger land use planning, whether it relates to the need for cluster development in housing focused areas or formula businesses, agriculture, et cetera. I was struck particularly by the acknowledged need to protect the town's prime farmland, which is located along the Route 79 corridor, and that Ellen dealt into much more profound and but I do think the town needs to enact laws that would prohibit any kind of commercial development on any of this particularly precious land, as Ellen has indicated how important it is to keep this in perpetuum. I was also pleased to see that the new plan focuses on the issue of climate change, acknowledging there is much that the town could do to promote the use of sustainable sources of power with solar panels, heat pumps, and wind. Also like to see the town look for a way to promote regenerative agriculture by helping young farmers acquire land to use these extremely important practices to help them make use of the tax incentives to do so, and also by encouraging residents to buy produce from these farmers. If anybody has read Drawdown, they will know that regenerative agriculture has the potential to draw down and sequester huge amounts of carbon in the soil, making that soil healthier and more productive. And that is good for all animals and the people and and the plants that live on the land. There is a great deal to say about this exhaustive and penetrating assessment of where we stand and what can be done to ensure that the vision of Caroline's future, as expressed by its residents, be realized in in the future. But really, time does not permit me to go quite there. Let me just finish by saying how grateful we should all be to have such a smart, hard take on this monumental task on our behalf. You have engaged in a process and created a document that reflects democracy and in its truest and finest form. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Lizzie. And let me just repeat now for anybody who has joined the meeting since the beginning that you'd like to address the planning board this public that if you'd like to address the planning board, this public hearing, you have to participants label, if you click that, you'll open a participant screen and at the bottom of that should be the ability to raise your hand and they'll add you into the speaking queue. All right. So and I'm going to mute you, Lizzie, if you could lower your hand. And then the next up will be Richard Anderson.
Oh. Am I? Okay, my name is, okay, my name is Rich Anderson. I'm a thirty plus year resident of Brookton Dale and Caroline. And I have to share with the other speakers, I've said, just really appreciate the tremendous hard work by the planning board, the people around the planning board before you folks, by the town board. I was previously the chair of the subdivision review committee, which is now the site plan review board. I'm very much in favor of the plan review process that the town has developed. I really support stronger land use planning in our community. I think I didn't used to feel this way, but I think zoning has to be on the table to look at that. When push comes to shove, we may need zoning. I don't know if the residents would agree with that or not, but certainly stronger land use planning is appropriate. I'm not going to go through all the different sections for areas that are addressed. A pet area of mine is the natural areas and trails group. A real supporter of extending the South Hill Recreation Trail out into Brookton Dale. During the we've seen so many more folks out biking, pushing baby strollers, hiking, jogging, a lot of and the county has developed trails and that are well used, Black Diamond Trail, the East Hill Recreation Way in Dryden. Right now, the Dryden Rail Trail is well underway. It's a fantastic project. So that's something I really have dear my heart, I would like to see that developed, the South Hill Trail Extension. New area. Municipal services, public sewage, public water and natural gas lines extended for residential development. Very much in favor of renewable energy that's proceeding in a lot of ways. I think the town has been a role model for that with the ground source heating at the town hall and the soul. So very much in support of that. That's about it. I'm going to just close with that. I just wanted to highlight the natural areas trails group and renewable energy. But thanks again for all the hard work. I think this is a well thought out document that I know I filled out a couple surveys and there's been many opportunities to contribute that to this process and there will be more. So kudo.
All right, great. Thank you, Richard. All right. Next up, Renee Pharoah. You're set.
Uh, hang on one second. There. How is everybody? I feel before. I I'm not, I don't have specific comments that I've really prepared, but I do want to say that it's September twenty fourth, twenty twenty. It's amazing. Tim and I moved into Caroline on mid-May in nineteen eighty two, and I keep hearing Lizzie and and so many of you talk about the the years that you've been in Caroline. And I will just relay again, one story that I love to tell my friends and my children to remind. Both Tim and I were very worried about trash within the community way back in the nineteen eighties. And we spearheaded a group of citizens to actually take action and we brought a petition similar to the one that has been generated. It was signed by Republicans, Democrats, really everybody across the board and presented to the town board. And the town board responded like this. They said, where where are you from? You should. It was totally disinviting. And I'll tell you, it it spurred us on to become organized and to become really kind of participants of our community and to realize that we need to be always a welcome welcoming community that welcomes a huge diverse set of people. I also want to say and remind us that that when we first moved in, people would protect their land and they would they could because, quote, a man could do what a man wants to do with his property. And that was something else that was oftentimes quoted. So just to wrap up, I want to say that our community has become a little bit more diverse. It's become a transient community, is no longer a farm community. And it has one speed, which is fast. The amazing part of COVID, I feel, is that it slowed us down. And we all realize that we have such amazing pressure to have strong, solid, thoughtful planning and zoning. There's no question in my mind. In the years from nineteen eighty two to nineteen to two thousand and twenty, that that feeling of being in the middle of a rural community has changed drastically. And I now feel, I think we all feel that we are in the middle of a much more of a suburban community, right? The question is how to preserve those things that we have that are left. And I think that the people that out a land use. I think that that's just an incredibly important thing that that our zoning has to do. I will say one more thing, which is there is mention of housing clusters within the within the current comprehensive plan. And I'm not quite sure it's a smart way to define specific clusters being just Slaterville and Brookton Dale. I mean, within our, we live at two two six two Slaterville Road and within our one mile over a hundred homes, a hundred residents who live in that pod, and that's excluding Brookton Dale. So I think it's a little short sighted to define these clusters because I think our community is growing in these pockets and pods that 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 perhaps we don't think of and we don't, and we don't acknowledge. So just to wrap up, you know, protection with thoughtful stringent planning and zoning. Zoning is is the only way to to uphold some of these issues in in court. Thanks again, you guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up looks like Paula Welling.
Hi, everyone. So first, like everyone else, I just want to say thank you to the planning board for all your work on the plan. I think the work done is really spectacular. I mostly just want to extend my overall support for the plan. As I read through it, I felt that it was really crafted to preserve what we love about Caroline on a positive and sustainable way for the future. Just to name a few specific things, I'm very much in favor of some carefully crafted zoning rules that will encourage nodes of development rather than sprawl. I also encourage the town to consider measures that can help preserve in a balanced and fair way the peace and quiet that we all have said that we so much appreciate here. For example, dark sky noise, traffic regulations. One thing in that regard on my mind breaks for trucks closer into nodes of development. It's just one thing that I've been thinking of. I think that this will help preserve some of the elements that we love and that contribute to the town's rural character into the future. I'm also strongly in support of expanding and improving bus service to the area. As a resident in Brookton Dale, I've long wanted to use the bus to commute and I don't live far from the stop. But the service just doesn't support what I need. And so I just can't do it. I also support the development of paths and other and of commercial development and focused walkable areas. Finally, I'm in full support of the items listed in the environmental protection and natural resources section, especially related to climate change, renewable energy, and as many others here have mentioned, preservation of open space. And finally, one last note. So my husband and I have not received any surveys related to the plan. How can we get on that list?
I again, how vital of answering questions. That survey was done several years prior before you were here. It's done about five years, four years ago.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, so, all right. So last one we have right now listed is Catherine Kelly McKenzie.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, so I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work.
Could you repeat your name formally for the?
Kathleen Kelly McKenzie, and I'm known as Kate to most people. I live at five seventy three Brookton Dale Road and the Hamlet of Brookton Dale. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to say thank you for working on this and updating it. I helped on the two thousand and six. And I was really glad to see the it's kept in there. I agree with the speaker right before me that we need increased connection to the to Ithaca from Brookton Dale and to focus that on the hamlets and the the housing clusters, as you said. The hamlets and the housing clusters, it would be good to have them identified because in the past, when I was applying for grants, I found that the Hamlet of Brookton Dale didn't really exist legally. We ended up going with a lighting zone, you know, to have some kind of boundaries that have some kind of definition. And that was when I was working on the South Operation Trail Extension into Brookton Dale, which would make a safe way for us to bike into Ithaca and connect us to the other trails. And I very much support that. So I was really glad to see that that was still in the plan. And I also want to say that I support zoning, just because I think, I know that's not part of the but I feel that New York State uses zoning and it's really the the legal way we can have some teeth to the plan. It's been frustrating to me since we wrote the plan years ago that sometimes the town board completely ignored it or had never even read it. So I really hope that we can, moving forward, the town board will use the comprehensive plan and and work from it. And at least read it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kate. All right, next up is John Reed.
Okay, thank you. I should be unmuted. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Reed. I'm a resident of Caroline and I've attended all the community input gathering meetings that you held and many of the online Zoom meetings. The planning board's updates for the comprehensive plan. I will be submitting my comments in writing. I do wish to express my admiration of the inclusive process that you used for gathering the opinions of the community. The way you've honored our sometimes conflicting wishes and you've given the public so many ways to be a part of this process. I totally support the intent and want to state that the property values here in Caroline are changing based on climate refugees and from the city dwellers coming here looking for and I really support the the codifying our our values into this document and having that as a way for the the boards of the future to to make decisions. Thank you and good luck.
All right. Thank you, John. Let's see. So Mary Alice, I am seeing your hand raised. Were you wanting to speak again? Because we have indeed now reached the end of our list.
Jonathan Comstock, I'm sitting here with and I'll, I have just a few comments, not very much.
Okay, so I think we either just start the beginning, I'll put your timer on and state your name and then launch into your comments.
Okay. My name's Jonathan Comstock. I'm a resident of Brookton Dale, the town of Caroline. I live up on the more rural portion of Brookton Dale, up by Shandigan Hollow Forest. I was very pleased reading through the comprehensive destructive document. I think a tremendous amount of energy and effort has gone into it. And I think it works to carve a middle position, which is very strong between overly defining specifics that try to narrow down what possibilities are and yet being specific enough to provide genuine guidelines and useful guides. So I really think that it's finding a very good balance that is appropriate for the town of Caroline. We appreciate it that the plan repeatedly emphasizes both the goals of inclusivity, avoiding racism or bigotry against any groups, and also a constructive set of goals and values related to affordable housing and local economic opportunity, which I think are equally important. You know, the goals on page twelve, affordable housing, pedestrian and bikeways, disaster preparedness, development of rural infrastructure. All of these. I think the rural character of the town includes not just its viewscapes and open spaces, but the many wonderful people whose roots here are deep and contribute to the cultural diversity and values of the town. So as well as being welcoming. And I myself was, you know, arrived here only a limited number of years ago. I think it's also important to preserve those those cultural values and appreciate them. I don't have much more to say. One special area of importance to me is renewable energy. I think that large solar farms, as well as solar at individual residents, are an inescapable part of our future and need to be. But they can be divisive. And while I think solar farms don't have a very negative impact on agricultural land because they can be easily removed if you want to, and they can be crazy. I know the people who are grazing. But they actually live here in Caroline. So I think that there's a lot of benefits there, but no one can argue that they don't impact the viewscape. And and depending on how you feel about them, that can be very good or very bad. So I guess I I hope that, and I think I did see one of the goals and action plans was to develop more criteria. But I think we need some advanced definition on where a solar farm is appropriately cited. And, you know, when in the plan, how do they come together to to say, yes, this is a good site or no, this is an inappropriate place to to do this development? And other than that, I I just want to say I strongly support the plan. I'm very impressed with it. And I think people have put a tremendous amount of constructive and effective work into it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Up I had Paul Frenzen, but now you have, there it is. Okay, good. Up I had Paul Franzin, but now you have, there it is. Okay, good. Let me click on that again. All right, so Paul, you should be able to speak soon. If you could speak up a little bit.
Oh, sorry. I'm not actually sure where the microphone is on here. Anyway, hi, I'm Paul Franzin. I'm over on Cottington Road in Brooktondale. I just wanted to speak out in favor of the communications section of the, of the plan. I was really happy to see that and to see that Part of our Before expansion of broadband and cellular coverage in the town At our address. We still have access to neither, unfortunately, even with the new cell tower. We still can't get a signal and we can't get workable internet here. So I'm very grateful to see that in the plan and I Hope that it is a focus of the town going forward. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to Some comments to the planning board? Because right now, okay, so someone has had their hand. Okay, so let me go. Okay, so Scott, you should be able to speak soon. Say your full name for the record, please.
Sure. Thank you. I'm Scott Reese. I live in, right in the Brooktondale Village. So I am a new, a new resident of Brooktondale and of Caroline generally, so I I'm excited to listen to hear the amount of passion and community engagement that Process. I just have a few quick things, or really one quick thing. I noted in the town, in the plan, there's quite a lot of Sort of nods to local, small, either agriculture or otherwise like small businesses that we can't count because we don't know quite How to categorize or we don't have an accurate count. There was, that kind of came up a couple different times. And I, I just kind of wanted to To maybe advocate for a way to find out some of that Information, because I think there's probably a lot of resources and a lot of little people doing really great things on some of these back roads that we don't necessarily know about, and it's hard to, to find. You know, if you drive around the back roads of, of Caroline, you can do most of your grocery shopping for the week Just from folks' little farm stands, and I think that is admirable and exciting, but also potentially hard, hard to find. And I know that in the action section, one of the action items is Is Route 79 to publicize local farms and the farmer's market. I would maybe just kind of admit to comment that it would be nice to have maybe some other Wayfinder. I'm kind of wondering what that, what that looks like, I guess, really. And just to have some, some clear direction on, hey, stop by this way and Maybe even some sort of online directory or something so people know this is a community that Has a whole bunch of different resources that you might not see just, you know, right as you're driving. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so next up is Barbara Short.
Do you have the floor? Yes, I was wondering The lady who stayed 85 when she got her house. That they told her to go back where she was because of zoning. I Kept track of how much our taxes went up from 80 to 90. We've lived here 40 some years. And Back then it was everybody wanting just Open fields and they wanted to watch the flowers grow. Well, they're not paying the taxes on that. And I think that people shouldn't be told what they can have or have not In their Yards or whatever, their land, your land is your land. One lady said at one meeting, if I wanted to pay Toilet purple, stick it out my front yard and plant Person it, I can't. And I think there's other people that feel that way also. And zoning is, we don't need to own. You know, it's kind of gets communistic. We've been trying to get somebody down here. We've lost, I don't know how many, probably Acre from where the creek is washed away. And we're on Boyceville Road, and we've contacted more and more people. And Nobody does nothing about it, and we can't do anything. That's all I get to say about that.
Okay, Barbara, thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else Who would like to address the planning board? I'll give a few more minutes for anyone who is on Decide to raise their hand. All right, not seeing anything, then I think we will adjourn this meeting. So the planning board's hearing and the town comprehensive, the town comprehensive plan is now adjourned. You will have until Monday to continue submitting written comments up until midnight on Monday. And I'm going to ask the planning board stand for just a quick minute because we have to decide when we're going to chat about all the things we've heard, because we're going to do it tomorrow, but it looks like that, that may not work. So I'm going to thank everyone who came and thank those who voiced their opinions. I appreciate the level of town interest and
Another hand.
You have one more. Up, 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 let's see. I, I am not seeing that hand, so I'm apologizing. I didn't show up for me, so
It was Kathy. Did you want to speak, Kathy? Next.
All right.
Not to put you on the spot, but I want you to have a chance to speak.
Yes. And I apologize again. Whatever person raised their hand, it's not shown for me, so I was not trying to ignore you. It's still not, oh, there it is. No, so I guess I have Renee with her hand up. Me, Catherine, who are you seeing?
They're not identified anymore, so.
Okay, all right, I'm going to call on Renee one more time, since we said at the end, people could talk again. All right, so you should be allowed to mute yourselves now.
This is not Renee. This is Tim. I was blocked out of the meeting and I just want to know that I'm here. So don't kick Renee off for the subsequent discussion.
Okay, all right, all right. And it's going to be about two minutes worth of discussion, so. Okay, so, so, okay, we're back to adjourn the meeting then.
One second, hey, Bill, just one second. I just wanted to add as well, since people asked Once about where they could submit written comments. Again, this can go to an email address, which is planning underscore board@townofcaroline.org. You can also send them in via mail. And those instructions are all on the Town of Caroline website at townofcaroline.org. And I put all those into your chat as well. So if you click on the chat button at the bottom of your screen, If you want to save that information, you can click the three little dots and save the chat for yourself right now, or I just, you can see it, and then that'll remind you, if you want to submit anything in writing, how you can do that. And thanks, everyone, for sharing tonight.
Okay, thanks, Charles. So yeah, I'm going to address the planning board, and it's going to be pretty boring, but So planning board, I guess you're going to mute yourselves, and when should we reconvene? Originally, we were going to try to meet tomorrow. Now you can't make that time. Should we go ahead? Can we find a time early next week? What would you guys like to do?
Well, I think if we, if we get all the comments by midnight on, what, Monday? Well, 12:01, then Tuesday would be good.
Yeah, right.
I mean, honestly, probably almost anytime works fairly well next week for me.
Catherine, what is your schedule like? Catherine, you're often pretty busy, I know, so.
I mean, evening, evenings are fine.
Okay, we're going to do Tuesday or Wednesday evening with all my wife doesn't shoot My calendar in front of
Wednesday would be preferred if
Wednesday, they'll give them a time to read it that came in by Monday, so I think Wednesday.
Actually, it would be good. Also, I, I agree on Wednesday because then we could have some opportunity to even suggest Any alterations that might Have come from this.
That's a good point. Yeah, a little bit of lag between that last set of comments. And I guess, do we get notified of anything that might show up on paper, not via email to the town?
So, so far, there's only been one set of comments that came in that way, and Jessica sent me an electronic version, which I will be distributing to you guys, but this afternoon, she's got busy enough that I have a few comments I had not forwarded to you guys yet. So let's plan, so do we, is 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, what do you guys want for Wednesday time?
Earlier, the earlier the better, I think, for me.
Okay, does that mean earlier than 6:00? Or does that mean 6:00?
It could be earlier than 6:00. I mean, I
Catherine, Charles?
5:30 is great.
Making it up.
Okay. It's a little, yeah.
The sun will still be out. It'll be amazing.
Okay.
Okay, so we said on 5:30 on Wednesday. Is that right?
Right.
Okay, okay, that's what we'll do, and that sounds great. And again, I will get out what has come in, I will get out to you, and as things come in, if they come in electronically or paper, I will get copies out to you as soon as I can. All right.
Great.
Okay, great.
All right, thanks, guys. Thanks for, everyone for being here. And everyone who participated. Yep.
Great to see you, buddy. Happy fall.
Yeah.